President Furman?
Present.
Vice President Curry?
Here.
Alder Bennett's excused, Alder Conklin? Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster?
I'm here. Somebody could X out that other one. I don't know what it is.
Alder Heck?
Here.
You have quorum.
Fantastic. Thank you. Our first order of business will be approval of minutes. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second by Alder Heck. Any questions, comments, corrections, concerns with the minutes? Not seeing any unless I see otherwise, I'll assume approved by unanimous consent and also note for the minutes that Alder Conklin has joined us. We do not have anybody registered to public comment. I assume that hasn't changed, so we will move on to disclosures and recusals. Are there members of the body that have any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code? Not seeing any, we'll move on to items for consideration. The first item is agenda item number two, Legislative File 76463, which is a pretty routine ordinance change. I will let Attorney Haas explain that to us.
Thanks. As you probably recall, we do a reviser's ordinance probably two or three times a year. And our ordinance revision specialist sort of keeps track as she comes across minor errors in the ordinances throughout the year and then accumulates them all and prepares a reviser ordinance. So this is, I guess, the spring version. As you see, it's mostly correcting spelling errors or citations to ordinance sections that may have changed. We do have in this one some cleanup of some ward descriptions. The planning department had, I don't know if these are Ton and Madison ones, but they discovered some cleanup in the way the wards were described. And so we just offered to put those into the reviser ordinance as well. So that's really all there is to it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I'll start with a motion. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for this item? Not seeing any, I will assume approved by anonymous consent. Do we move on to item number three on our agenda, Legislative File 6500, which is a long one. I believe there is a substitute available. But we can start by pulling up the substitute. Attorney Haas can explain that in a moment, but I can explain kind of the purpose of this ordinance, which, you know, if people have reviewed it, can see it's a long one. And so the drafter's analysis is a pretty good summary. But I've worked with Alder Foster and Attorney Haas on trying to codify some practices that we normally were doing or we were just doing based on tradition, or there was some confusion about, and tried to put it in the ordinance. So people weren't searching for memos or trying to remember traditionally how we do something. Or in the case of our legislator, Legistar, actually adding some version control. And so we've had instances where ordinances or resolutions have gotten updated and they are not updated as new versions. And so sometimes it's very unclear what was updated, what attachment we're passing, et cetera. That's a really high overview of this. I don't know if either Attorney Haas or Alder Foster want to get into more detail on any of the changes in particular, but that's kind of the extent of my intro. Anybody want, have questions or, as I said, want more of an explanation? And I think Attorney Haas, you can share quickly with what, you know, at least what the substitute did, which I think is just a minor movement around in sections.
Right. We had language, we just moved it from one part of the last section seven in the ordinance. We simply moved language into a different part of the existing section 3.70 related to kind of the version control and retaining previous versions of legislative documents in Legistar. And once we drafted that, I drafted it, IT kind of pointed out that it probably wasn't in the most appropriate subsection of 3.70. So we moved that, we moved that language. That's really all the substitute does. I think one point in the drafter's analysis, I can, I guess I wanted to check with the sponsors on this. We had, the second paragraph of the drafter's analysis says that that we will no longer have substitutes or alternates, but I thought we subsequently decided that only alternates would be removed. We would still have substitutes. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this is, I guess, maybe it's worth a quick, sorry Chair, is it all right if I? Thanks. The, you know, for, we have this tradition of describing things as substitutes or alternates. It's not really even in, like, there's a little bit that we would, are proposing to take out related to alternates. And to basically just say in the future, there's a first version and then anybody who could, who can sponsor a motion, you know, any member of council, including the mayor, could put in a substitute version. And we're not going to worry about who's agreeing to sponsor or anything else. They're all just different substitutes and that we would describe them as, you know, version two or version three. But really with the point of everybody being clear about what you're voting on, because I think it gets real confusing sometimes. Say, well, there's a substitute and an alternate. Well, how do you even know what those are? And we're trying to label them in Legistar. So this instead would move to a practice of just saying, here's a substitute version number two. Here's a substitute version number three. So using the, like, version numbers to just have better clarity for everybody involved. And then some of, what this also does is then requiring specific names for, you know, if a recommendation of plan commission is move with, you know, with conditions. And then we've had, you know, an instance where like, there's a document that says here's conditions, but that, if that document changes over time, we want to be clear that here's the document that plan commission actually recommended. And if there's a new version of an attachment, for example, you know, that has to have a new name. And we want to keep a record of the, any of the old documents that were actually used, particularly in recommendations or introduced and, you know, changed over time. So it's really, I think, instituting some expectations so that you don't, you're not voting on something that you think is a plan commission use, but actually it's a new document and it's not even clear that that's different. So I think that's a big part of it. And the other thing I guess worth calling out and it's in the drafter's analysis. But just really clarifying the role of the president. And so, you know, by tradition, they're always sort of called on first to make a motion. You know, that's sort of codified here. It doesn't have to be, but that's sort of the tradition. The council president has made whatever motion they really want. Generally, it's whatever's on the agenda. But it really just codifies that it's really the role of the council president to set the agenda and to sign off on the recommended actions that are there. And if the council president doesn't do anything, it's whatever the lead committee said, which is our normal way of doing it. But there have been many occasions and it's just sort of clarifying that if the council president has the authority on the agenda to put a different recommended action. And it's transparent that that's, you know, sort of who's doing it. They can do the same thing on the consent agenda. So it's also sort of codifying that the recommended actions on the consent agenda should only be sort of changes to what's printed on the agenda and with the sign off of the council president. And then anybody, any member of the body can still pull something off the consent agenda, move a different thing later on. But in terms of consent agenda, it's not like council staff's responsibility to decide who gets to make changes to it. So it kind of codifies that. And then obviously on the floor, council president can make whatever motion they want as well. They could also defer to another member of the body. I think that kind of captures another big chunk of it.
Yeah, with the main understanding that, you know, it doesn't matter what the council president, it matters only in the sense that, you know, the council president makes that first motion, but then the body, anybody can make a new motion. And so it's really just starting the discussion. It's hopeful that through this, where, you know, the council president makes a motion that is the more likely motion that's going to pass, but there is no inability of any member of the council then to make a new motion and say, you know, I want to substitute this or amend the motion, that type of thing.
One, on that point, President Furman, also it does clarify, and this already sort of was the case through Robert's rules, but we had this sort of tradition of sometimes you'd be like, well, we're going to do staff questions and you can't make another motion until we get through all the questions first. And so this clarifies that a motion is really in order at any time. So if the council president were to move something and somebody else wanted to move something different, you know, they can do that straight away. We don't have to go through a question period related to the first motion before we can, you know, consider a second. So this also clarifies that.
Take it all towards the start. Alder Heck, go ahead.
Just on that latter point, you better make sure the mayor understands that. I raised my hand because I had a question about the portion of this that relates to referrals. And it kind of, it says that you're removing the requirement that referrals made without the consent of the lead sponsor be excluded from the consent agenda. You can do it from the floor, but must be excluded from the consent agenda. So are you saying that the president decides the referrals before the meeting if they are?
So, yeah. So basically, whoever sponsors it, you know, chooses their referrals and has, can add or whatever until it's introduced. But whatever's printed on the agenda is the recommended, you know, referrals. Even if the sponsor wanted to add something, you know, anything that's going to change needs to basically be signed off by the council president or someone can pull it, you know, off of the consent agenda and make whatever change, you know, recommended changes they want. So in the past, it was, we didn't, this was created before we had the new consent agenda standardized and put into ordinance. So now that we have the consent agenda, it sort of clarifies that, you know, the sponsor or somebody else could say, hey, I want to add a referral. They can, if the council president agrees to put that on the consent agenda, so that could be the sponsor that's asking that, like, it's not contentious. But the council president is signing off on printing something new on the consent agenda. And if everybody leaves it there and everybody's fine with it, it's done. But if anybody wants to argue it, they can still pull it off and then, you know, debate those things. So it kind of pulls it out because it's not needed anymore, the way that we're using the consent agenda and the way that this is codifying the consent agenda process.
So could a non-sponsor get a referral on the consent agenda as long as the council president agrees?
Correct. And then if the, you know, and sort of, it's not printed in here, but if you, you know, if you wanted something different, you could also speak with the sponsor, get their consent. The council president may or may not care about that, but either way, there's, that's sort of the bar. And so if, let's say somebody says, oh, I want to add a referral, the sponsor doesn't agree to it, but the council president does. That's what would be listed on the consent agenda as a recommended action. But then anyone, including the sponsor, says, great, take it off the consent agenda. We're going to, we're going to talk about it because I don't agree to that. Right? So it's basically just about like, what gets printed on the agenda is if nobody says anything, this is what gets passed with consent agenda. But anything outside of that, it gets pulled and, you know, the council president can make a motion and then the sponsor could immediately make a motion and say, no, I, you know, I want something different. So it just gets it to the debate that you need to have. Unless nobody wants to have the debate and then it allows it to get passed on a consent agenda.
Okay, so this kind of relates to something I talked to Karen and I think Liz about. It's not ever entirely clear who a lead sponsor is. And maybe this, for this purpose, it doesn't really matter because anybody can do anything and, or attempt to do anything and propose a referral. Yeah, I had talked to Karen and Liz about, you know, the fact that oftentimes the mayor is listed as the lead sponsor, all of a sudden, and the order is confusing. And I mean, it doesn't really matter, but in this stance, it really doesn't matter either, I guess.
Well, that's why getting rid of it's good because, yeah, I used to say, well, okay, now who's the lead sponsor to sign off on this thing? And now it avoids that because there's only one council president or whoever signing off on the consent agenda, you know, in their absence. And it's the other, by pulling the alternate and substitute distinction, that was all based on the sponsor, the lead sponsor. And so, yes, we are, we're like pulling that out. So it really is now not, there isn't such a thing as a lead sponsor that's going to make a decision that's either going to cause it to be called an alternate or a substitute or whether, you know, the change can happen on the referral.
I predict confusion from many, but I like it. Thanks.
Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm thinking about making sure I understand all this to communicate it. One of the questions I had, Alder Foster had mentioned a substitute in the previous explanation they gave was about, you know, everything would just be a substitute. Far as I understand from Robert's rules amendment, might be, I think there was some discussion of calling it an amendment so that you would have, anything could be an amendment, didn't need to have a lead sponsor, not, you know, it could just be an amendment. It wouldn't take over the original motion, like the way that alts subs take over the original motion. And you would then have to vote on the amendment, whether to adopt the amendment as part of the original motion and then, and then vote on the original motion. That was sort of, so I just, I just want to be clear on your intent with this because I think that.
Sure. Yeah, that's a really good question. And I think it might, I'd be happy to work with you Attorney Haas, whoever, maybe we could, we could work at like, I mean, this is obviously all ordinance language and, you know, Attorney Haas put a lot of work into, you know, making sure it's built the way it needs to be there. But I think this is probably something that we could try and put into infographic or something. But the, there's two different things. There's what we call substitute versions of ordinances. And then there's a substitute motion and the way that Robert rules deals with that. And so this doesn't really, this doesn't really weigh in on the question of how we want to, you know, if we want, how we want to do amendments to motions on the floor as much as this still allows there to be, you know, there was a version that was introduced. And at any point along the way, somebody else can create another, an amendment, you know, which is the whole thing. And the, but like, plan commission, let's say, is the lead sponsor. They recommend a version, right? A thing with some amendments. We want that to be actually written out. We don't want to just like a narrative that says plan commission this with whatever. That needs to get translated into actual form for an ordinance. Everybody's looking, there's no questions. And that is, it's a, it could be moved, whatever, whichever version, version three could be moved from the floor, you know, as the starting point. That's the recommendation from the lead. That's what the council president moves, et cetera. Any other, there could be then three other versions. There could be somebody has another idea, whatever. And they could all move amendments to that main motion once it's on the floor. I think that we're trying to get away from like, Attorney Haas, I mean, if you want to explain it more, but I don't, this isn't really trying to even address that question. It's more just saying, we're not going to differentiate between alternates and substitutes. Meaning, did the lead sponsor agree to the changes? Now it's a substitute. Did they not as an alternate? We're getting rid of that is really what this is doing.
If I could, President Furman, I think that's a good clarification though. I mean, the question that Karen asked, the, it sounds like the intent is still what would be referred out of the lead referral committee would essentially stand as what we now call a substitute or alternate. Just would not be called that, but there would be one vote on it. It would not be an amendment to the original, correct? And then Alders can propose amendments on the floor, which would take two votes to be passed.
Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that we'll have to have some staff conversations about the correct language of the, you know, because we want to, I know for version control, I mean, there are, in Legistar, you do version, it's easy, do version one, version two. You don't want to then, we have to have instructions about when, you know, how to manage this process in Legistar and then also what to call it. You know how we write substitute? We write, I know Attorney Haas tried one recently where he wrote amendment. You know, so you could imagine amendment one, amendment two, amendment three actually written. So we have to manage that and we have to make sure that we have a consistent way of doing that. So this helps. Thank you.
Alder Heck, go ahead.
I'm going to let Alder Foster speak first because I think he was going to say something about what Karen had to say.
Okay. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I was going to say, I, you know, the implementation of this is not, you know, insignificant. And there's a lot of variability going on, you know, has been. So I'm, you know, I'm totally comfortable putting in a, you know, effective date of, you know, three months into the future or whatever, you know, the appropriate amount of time is. But, you know, because I think it's worth, you know, having confidence that, yep, this is going to be the new thing and then really, you know, developing that out. So I guess, and I'm sure Attorney Haas can help, you know, get some language around that. But I guess I would, I would, I think that it does, it's probably the admin services team that is going, you know, would take the lead on this. So, I mean, I'd love to talk with you more and I think we can come up with a plan if we need to, if we want to have a modified version with an effective date or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Patrick, Alder Heck, I'm going to jump in front of you for just a second, just to note, like, I think, I think for people that have been Alder for a while, I think we're all comfortable with the confusing system that we have now. There's all sorts of weird things that happen and that we've gotten used to it and change is hard. But really, this was developed trying to streamline the time that we spend on this stuff and just trying to streamline the understanding and definitely cut down the learning curve that new Alders will have. And so I'm a little bit concerned and often we can talk about this before Tuesday. I would be concerned about delaying this and making new Alders learn one process and then all of a sudden implementing a new process three months later. I think my biggest suggestion will be, and I'm sure Alder Foster would be willing to spend some time working with Attorney Haas, Karen and myself, to make sure that we do good training documents on this and say to, you know, existing Alders that are still on the council, hey, by the way, you may not have looked at the orientation that was going to come out about how this works, but you really should because how it works is being streamlined, it's being changed and you need to, you know, learn it and be different. So if you're not going to watch, you know, the orientation about parks because you've been in Alder for a while, that's fine. But this particular orientation about how this type of stuff works, you absolutely should watch because we've changed it. It's definitely, once you learn it, you'll recognize it makes a lot more sense. But in the meantime, you know, it is a different way of thinking about it and change is not always easy. So hopefully that helps. Alder Heck, go ahead.
I was just, just had a suggestion. I, I'm really excited to get rid of the confusing alternate and substitute stuff. And I think that for new Alders, that's going to be really helpful, you know, there's just going to be substitute. That's great. But you know what? Even after four years, I still sometimes get confused between amendment and alternate. And if alternate goes away, I think that's going to help new Alders a lot, but older Alders, I think, will still be a little bit confused. So I think to, that we need to really hit home the difference now between amendment and substitute. And I think it's going to be easier this new way. So that was just my comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah. And I, I think in terms of all the procedural kind of stuff, I agree, it should, it should sort of take effect, you know, when, assuming it passes and with the new term. I think what I was, I think anticipating from Karen was the sort of the staff side, like loading into Legistar kind of side of it. And if we're going to change, like, getting standards around what do you put for the title and those sorts of things. So I think from a, I think, I think that could happen. That could take a little bit, you know, that could get codified kind of as we go, I guess. But I just, if there's a concern that staff don't want to be out of compliance with the, with a new ordinance saying, hey, these are the expectations, having a buffer up mainly on the staff side to get those conventions worked out and kind of communicated out. But I'm happy to, you know, work offline and come up with something everybody feels comfortable with.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Attorney Haas. Oh, you're muted.
Thanks. So maybe this has been said, but just to clarify, if out of a lead referral committee, if the original legislation has been altered, that's the recommended motion. Are we still okay calling that a substitute to distinguish it from just a plain old amendment? Okay. Thanks.
Karen, go ahead.
Just real quick. So then if we, if an Alder then wants to, I put in another one. It's not the lead referral, you know, it's, maybe it's whoever, right? And they say, put this in for me. What do I call it? What are you thinking we call it? I mean, just off the top of your head.
Substitute number two.
Substitute number two.
Substitute number four. Yep.
Okay. So substitute now.
Make a move number four instead of going through the whole, whatever.
So the big message here is substitute means something slightly not quite the same as it did. And we just need to get that clear to everyone. Okay.
Yep. And it would totally be up to the president to decide, you know, if there's a different motion. So say, you know, say that, you know, I, the president knows that Alder Foster has worked on that a lot and he appreciated the feedback of a particular committee, but he wants to take that feedback and do another version. The president can decide, you know, we're giving the flexibility to the president to put on consent agenda that we're actually going to move substitute number two, which, you know, Alder Foster, you know, put forward. And any member of the body then can, you know, exclude that and say, nope, you know, I want to go back to what, you know, that particular board suggested or inversely, you know, Alder Foster just is, doesn't like what the committee did and the president disagrees and says, nope, the committee should be the right thing. The president gets to make that decision on the consent agenda, but there's nothing stopping Alder Foster from removing it from consent and talking about it and making that motion for his item. It's going to flow and work a lot better that way. And, you know, really hopefully, you know, streamline meetings make this process a lot clearer. But again, I think it's, it definitely is going to require some re-education. Alder Foster.
Yeah, just on this, this point about, that came up before, and Alder Heck, you said, you know, make sure the mayor knows about it. And I think Attorney Haas has had some conversations, otherwise we'll, you know, make sure and have those. But part of why I think it is important to clarify that other motions are in order sort of, you know, towards the beginning is, you know, what this could lead, if you had a ill-intended council president, right, who wants to use this authority to put stuff as recommended actions that nobody's agreeing with. You don't, you want to be able to sort of have, if the body disagrees with the, with the council president's initial recommendation, it should be, should make it easy for the body to move to something else. And so just because the council president can say, yeah, I move a thing that, let's say, 19 other Alders do not support, any other member of the body should be able to raise their hand, get, you know, get called on and say, I would like to move an amendment to that, you know, and proceed and not have to spend 45 minutes in staff discussion on a motion that potentially that the full body doesn't support. So I just wanted to call that out as why it's, why it's sort of an important clarification and safeguard to, you know, a council president who's acting abusively by making motions that aren't, you know, are not the will of the body, basically. Because that's the goal is, the council president's job is to prepare the agenda in a way, prepare the consent or, you know, sign off on a consent agenda and then moving in the moment, which sometimes something comes up and there's a good reason to move something different than what's on the consent agenda. Their goal is to make the meeting go, you know, quickly to get to the, to the will of the body. So that the ideal is that the council president is not moving what they want, but they're moving what they think is the will of the body and that will expedite business.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Yeah, we will, we will make sure that this, you know, and there may be, you know, a slightly modified version of the training for existing Alders that maybe connects some dots. But I really do think when this is laid out, you know, in an infograph chart and some education, that it's going to be pretty smooth. Vice President Curry?
I feel bad for raising my hand because I heard infograph chart. I'm a visual processor and I'm sure y'all have seen my face and I'm totally confused. So if there could be like a PowerPoint or something or like, I don't, I don't know. I understand that those of you who've been on council longer have gotten used to the process and this is better, but I'm struggling conceptualizing it, just having the conversation and looking at what's in Legistar.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Appreciate that feedback. I mean, I think even if Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Appreciate that feedback. I mean, I think even a flow chart, do you think like a flow chart would help? Like, you know, you know, this is visually, you know, here are the different paths something takes. I mean, we could, we could play with it, but I, but I will probably reach out to you, Vice President Curry, and run some of that by. So, so you're, you know, you can give some feedback. Alder Madison, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I am, I just want to say I'm, I'm trying to multitask here. But I do think a flow chart or something where you can track where things are already in a process as Vice President Curry is mentioning. I'm also a visual learner and that will help because I'm often making myself notes in scribble on where we're at in a process anyways. So something like that would be helpful.
Definitely. Thank you. Attorney Haas.
Sorry, one more quick question. This relates to the conversation, Alder Freeman and Alder Foster that we have earlier today. We could do this after this meeting or if you wanted to look at this. Now, in the last section, it, it talks about changes to versions of documents that had been introduced or that had been submitted into the legislative file. And I don't know if you want to consider striking that clause because of the discussion about things that might be changed before introduction and whether or not those versions, the original version needs to be retained.
Yeah, I mean, I'll let, I'll let Alder Foster talk in a second, but I just want to say that, I mean, there's concern that staff puts things into Legistar as a draft and lets alders review it and they go back and forth. And they, they don't want to have to keep creating new versions for that. But I will tell you, we had a, you know, a pretty frustrating issue recently, very recently, at our last council meeting where an item was introduced, our agenda was published. And between that period, which was the agenda was published, I believe Friday morning, later on in the day when the Board of Public Works published their agenda between those two times, luckily, this item was changed, but it hadn't been introduced yet in front of council. And so we had a situation where I had to actually go back and figure out what exactly did Board of Public Works on Wednesday approve? Because what, because we knew that it was, when was it changed? It was just a very confusing process and it had to do with money. I mean, it had to do with, you know, a financial amount that was changed. And luckily I was able to determine that the packet that was released to Board of Public Works on the Friday afternoon had the change that wasn't reflected when the agenda was published on Friday. So I'd want to be very careful about the council being the place for it to be introduced. And I will hand it over to Alder Foster, I believe has a decent suggestion on, on how to do, deal with that.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think sort of exempting, and I, I, once it gets published on an agenda, I think to me is where it's now sort of public. That's where, you know, somebody clicks on a link, they get to this thing, they think they're looking at it. For it to change after that point mysteriously, I think is, is a real problem, can be a real problem. But if it's a draft of something that's put into Legistar, that's not published anywhere else, it's not on a meeting agenda, hasn't been introduced formally, anything like that, then sure, you can, that's sort of in its draft format is my intent.
So, so, I mean, can we substitute or that have been published as part of the agenda?
Yeah, if you could work on that.
Yep. It shouldn't be the agenda. I mean, you know, I will say, you know, I bet everybody here in this room reviews the council agenda at a different time. I'm, I'm done reviewing the agenda by Friday morning, right? Because as president, I get it early, so I clicked on attachments. If somebody changes something on Monday or during the day or Tuesday morning, I have no idea that that took place without some sort of designation that there was a substitute. And so I think it's important for us not to have to guess when somebody looked at it and then what version they saw. So yeah, once an agenda, a, a agenda is published. So Alder Foster? Did you want to, Attorney Haas, why don't you go ahead and ask your question?
I'm just wondering if you want to incorporate that as a change to this to be moved out of C C E C.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If there was no objection from C C E C when we make the motion, yeah, I think that would make sense.
Yeah, I just wanted to call out, this is, this, this also sort of goes hand in hand with the requirement to, like, number or identify, identify new versions of things. So, you know, something, something is published on an agenda, it's there, something needs to be fixed about it or changed. You create a new one, you know, version two, whatever, you upload it in there, you leave the old one in there. And now you, you're, it's also solving this issue where there is a, an actual motion of a committee that's referencing an attachment or a document. And if, and then there's a change in the versions, we need, we need to be not swapping out, but creating a new version. And then the same thing, you know, if that's there and, and it, you know, it hasn't been introduced in any setting or anything yet, it could be, it could be modified, but then once it's used at a meeting, that version needs to stay there.
Yeah, I mean, I could give two, two examples. I mean, we had an example once where an item was, you know, on our agenda and we were passing a policy document that was attached. I follow, as recall, he got an email because that morning, the, the fire department decided to take in some feedback and change the document. And there was no audit trail of that. Nobody knew that, that, that morning of the council meeting that was changed. And luckily, you know, it was caught and Alder Paulson, who was here, who may, may want to comment about that more or some other stuff. We were able to point out to people, hey, this changed and here's what changed. But we also have that with a lot of planning stuff at times, a planning map will change. And it's unclear, you know, what attachment we're voting on. So, you know, it doesn't say in the actual ordinance or resolution, you know, here is the name of the document we're voting on. And they just add another document, a revised document. And we have no idea. It's so confusing to know. And so it just happened with the Odana area with one of the maps, I made planning, go back and do a substitute because, you know, we accepted something different and it was very unclear from reading the ordinance or the resolution that, that was happening. So it's important for there just to be a very transparent, easy way to look at that. And I think, yeah, the agent, once it's published, I think that's a good place. Alder Paulson.
I was just going to suggest, and I apologize, I'm coming from a different committee, so you may have already hammered up on this one. But it may just be safer to say, like, once it goes into Legistar, any change gets a new version, right? So there's just no confusion, like, did it get published on something? Maybe that's not feasible technology wise, but it feels like doing collaboration.
Alder, that's exactly what our change says right now. And what we're being told by staff is that's too confusing for them because they put something in Legistar and they'll review it with an alder that they're working on it with. And they'll be going back and forth and making tweaks and having lots and lots of versions is going to make that process a lot harder. And so we're trying to, to kind of draw a line where, you know, we certainly want the audit control, but do we need that if, you know, you know, they, they, they put something in Legistar for you and you, you reviewed it and decided, nope, I want that paragraph to be different. I mean, we could end up having, you know, six, seven, eight different versions.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I think, I think the, the agenda trick is, is probably going to make people feel a lot better and really gives the level of transparency that we're looking for. There will be, again, we don't want confusion on what people are voting for or try to figure out, you know, have a president or Karen call around and say, hey, when did you review the agenda? Because this item changed and there's no way to tell. So this, this should clean it up. And, you know, I know it's part of some other changes that are in this document, but I think that's something that, um, it won't need much explanation for alders or the public. It's just going to be very transparent and very easy to see that there are new stuff. And obviously, you know, it does require some staff training. But I, I'll, we'll talk about whether or not we need to, you know, change the implementation on that. But I will say, as council president, we have run into this a bunch of times in the last few months. And I know staff is not intentionally trying to confuse people, but it's confusing a lot of people. And it becomes very unclear what we're about to pass and whether or not everybody understands what we're about to pass. So I think the sooner we can implement it, the better. But I also recognize that this is going to require some new workflow and new training. So we will, I will meet with, you know, find some time for, before the Tuesday's council meeting. So Alder Foster, Attorney Haas, Karen and I have a plan on implementation. And if anything changes from this, we'll, we'll certainly include that as part of the motion. But I think the feedback is all very good here. I mean, I appreciate, frankly, people being very frank and saying, this is confusing. And we will make sure that this is not as, as confusing for, for all involved. And I really do think that this is going to make the process a lot more accessible to the public and the new alders. Because our current process is actually quite confusing. Even I, as president, get confused sometimes about how some of that stuff is working. And I think this is going to be a lot better. So Alder Foster, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move a recommendation of approval with the change that we discussed. I don't know, Attorney Haas, if you want to give an attempt at the phrase framing of it.
I was just looking at section, section seven of the ordinance. And it's the one, two, three, four, five, six line from the bottom, replacing been submitted into the legislative file with published as part of an, of an agenda.
Sounds good. That's the motion.
Karen, you're good with that? Okay, can I get a second? Looks like, Vice President Curry, thank you so much. Is there any other questions or discussions about this? Not seeing any, as if there's, there are no objection, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. Thank you. The next item is, what, agenda item four, legislative file six, five, four, seven, six, sorry, seven, six, five, four, seven, which is dissolving the ad hoc task force on, on the structure of government, on the structure of city government, final report implementation work group and transferring those responsibilities to the common council executive committee. I will note that this item, I did not get into Legistar until later, later yesterday. But, but it is very, very, very straightforward. So it includes history of T F O Gs very briefly. It includes history of the work group. It points out that that work group has not been active for, for over a year now. That those responsibilities have been part of the common council executive committee and that it makes sense in the future for that to continue. That, you know, future C C E Cs should be considering the leftover recommendations. As part of this item, I've included a, a final copy of the recommendation work plan tracker, which has information on all of the T F O G group final report recommendations and where they were left. It's sorted into categories, which is also referred to in the ordinance of three, one, one, Legistar, B C C structure, B C C appointment review, the mayor's office, administrative service team and C O S. Alder Foster, what is C O S? I didn't realize we left that in because I wasn't sure what that was.
Yeah, I think that was chief of staff, maybe. I don't know, we, what, maybe we should double check that one.
Okay, let's make sure that's clear. So we may, we may have a substitute in front of council. But essentially, you know, the big, big part about this is to give new alders, as well as, you know, the, whoever is on the next C C E C, a blueprint to just things to consider. And so one thing I also linked on there was the presentation we had last month about committees. And so, you know, the, the new alder, the new term alders can, can decide whether or not they want to pursue any of that, but they could at least see the work that was put in and decide which, what they wish to pursue. And there are certainly recommendations in, for example, that, you know, the new C C E C should be getting updates about three, one, one and figuring out the scope, et cetera. Alder Heck.
Thanks. If, if you are going to put in a substitute, I have a suggestion. One, I, I don't think I saw it in the resolution, but I, I mean, it, it makes total sense what you're proposing. And, and one of the additional motivations is that C C E C also had our charge changed. And this fits exactly into, I think, our new statement of purpose or whatever it's called. And you could even call that out in a whereas clause. It's not just that C C E C wants to do this work, it's, it's because we should do this work. So you, if, not necessary, I don't think if you're not otherwise putting in a substitute and it could just come up in discussion perhaps, because I can imagine there being some questions.
Yeah, I had actually, I would actually say that we, we actually did not radically change C C E C's charge. We just took out some things that they, we didn't believe that, the, well, the, the majority of council that passed it didn't believe they were doing. So C C E C always had the charge, look at organizational stuff. So that wasn't necessarily new. We just said they shouldn't be focusing on a lot of things that other committees should be focusing, that are focused on as well. So something goes in front of, plan commission, they should come here as well.
The, 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 the real effect of that is though, is to focus on more on those other items that were already part of it. So, well, anyway, just.
Well, I'll certainly think about it. Alder Foster.
Yeah, no, I, I think I, I think I get the suggestion and is, I mean, I agree, it didn't change a lot. But I think the point to me is that it is, it always, I think, really was the natural purview of C C E C. In a way, T F O Gs itself was like a deep dive into it, right? It was this ad hoc thing. T F O G's implementation was, you know, at the time, it was felt that there was too much work needed around the reviewing of recommendations for C C E C to handle. And so T F O G's implementation was already sort of doing that on their behalf. And I think so, yeah, nothing has really changed and C C E C is not picking this up as a random thing. It's just sort of coming back, you know, now that a lot of the work has been done. And it's just clarifying that C C E C should continue to own sort of these elements of, that, that were, that are open recommendations from T F O G. So I, I think it's a good point. I think there's, I've got an, an idea, we could maybe add a phrase in there. So I think we'll, we'll get that cleaned up and just get a substitute ready.
Thanks. I'm, I'm kind of anticipating questions, I guess. So I think you get the drift. Thanks.
Well, and I, I'll just say briefly, I mean, this is, I think, meant to also be, you know, obviously, that, you know, several of us have had, had a lot of direct experience with T F O Gs. You know, I think that with the new term, there will be, you know, maybe no direct connection anymore. And so this really was also meant to be, and I think there will be attachments on the legislative file with the, you know, the tracker, et cetera. So that in the future, you know, the next C C E C can effectively sort of pick it up and, and see the work that was done and make its own decisions about what it thinks are the priorities, et cetera. But at least the, there's sort of summary information available and the work can, there can be some continuity to the work.
Thank you both. Can I get a motion?
I'll move a recommendation for approval.
Can I get a second? Alder Heck was first, so Alder Heck with a second. Unless there's any objection, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. I will honor our next item. Our next item is legislative file seven, six, six, four, nine, which is authorizing the city of Madison, develop a comprehensive response to the crisis in home healthcare in Madison. Alder Vetter is here this evening to talk to us about this item, which she wanted us to take up. At some point, this was introduced in front of council by title only, but there is language associated. And I assume Alder Vetter will tell us a little bit about this. And I, I know Karen was involved and may have some stuff to add, but Alder Vetter, go ahead.
Be here before you and thank you for having me before you. I got on the city council three months ago, you know, because district 12 needed more representation. But the, the really key thing that was on my mind is we've got to do something about this home healthcare crisis. Because indeed it is a huge, huge crisis in our city affecting people with disabilities and older people. And it's, it's something that needs to be addressed. And this, the, the different levels of government are looking at this. I sent you an article from the Huffington Post, actually on the federal level, national level. Now Democrats are looking into help, to doing help for getting more money for being put into direct home care workers. This is phenomenal. It's right at the same time this is happening on a local level. So it is being worked on now at this time in a really timely way. And, and I just want to thank everyone who would help me out with this, especially Karen and, and the council staff. But I also want to thank the other people who brought this to my attention. We've been living, I've been living this way for over 40 years. I can tell you my own personal story, which is very strong. But I wanted to make sure this came, I want to thank Alder Cocklin in particular for bringing this forward to the disability rights commission. Because they met together at their last meeting in February. And it was very strong response on, on this disability rights commission. It was on their agenda, people came to speak and there was such strong and incredible testimonies from people. There were like 12 different people from different areas and former workers, people who are working now, people with disabilities. And saying this is, and you should look at that record, look at that meeting just for that discussion all by itself. It gets incredible. And so I wanted to thank all those people. I want to thank the people who came before me in the disability community to have all the help that we have now with ADA and all that stuff. However, we are still working, we're still fighting to get the help that we need. We desperately need it. And I can tell you my story. I, I've been having help for over 40 years now. I, right now, I have three mornings a week that people help me. The other mornings, the other four mornings, no help at all. In the evenings, no help at all for anyone. It's thanks to my husband who's aging and is not able to do this, that I'm able to be here today. But it's only because of that and that's. But it's only because of that. And that's very, very tenuous, extremely tenuous and could change at any point with his abilities to do things. And so this this legislation is it's the strongest thing that that's affecting people with disabilities now is is not being able to find persons to help us with our cares so that we can be protective members in the community. You know, it's great that I'm on the city council and it's wonderful and I'm happy to be there and working. But I would not be here if if I couldn't get out of bed in the morning. I can't get to do anything during the day for 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 my activities in the community. So, I mean, it doesn't mean anything if there's accessibility and all that that's in place, which is wonderful stuff. I don't put it down. But if you can't get to where you are because you're stuck in bed, there's no, nothing that's going to happen. So this is a huge need. If you, I hope you've read over the language in the resolution. There's a lot of very strong statements in there about how great the need is. And I've also sent different documentation for you to look over and and read about. It shows how extremely crucial this need is because it is in a crisis situation. So I wanted to have you be able to, I welcome any questions about what 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 we're doing and what this amendment about. And and it's, you know, the part of the resolution is forming a working group that can work on these issues, study them, work on them and come together with some possible solutions, some possible recommendations of what the city can do to help out the situation of 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 the need for people to have other persons help us out and be able to get us up for the day and do the things that to be active members of our community. So I'm, I just want to thank you and I can go into any tiny detail that you would like and tell you whatever kind of information that you'd like about this. But it's all in the language in the in the body and also in the recommendations that are down there. Hopefully, the working group can work on these resolutions that are in the in the body of the of the resolution, but maybe come up with different ones and be able to work on it on a consistent basis to be able to make some changes and see how the city actually can help in whatever ways the city can to do this. A large part of it is federal and and state. And so if part of it is lobbying the state to get more money to put into help for this issue. So, um, but the city, I know the city can help out and whatever, I mean, it needs to help in whether of whatever ways it can to to have us be able to move forward and find find new people, find people who can be direct caregivers. They're woefully underpaid and they get the same amount of pay as somebody working in a quick trip or and people do change and they've changed to move from this kind of care as caregivers to something like that just because it pays more. That's that's really, I think that's devastating and it's really immoral. And so these changes need to be made and I want to work together with the city and the working group as to how we can address them, what kind of recommendations we can bring forward and implement implementation of these changes. So thank you very much. And I really want to hear from you and see what you have to say and any questions you have as well.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thank you. And thanks, Alder Vetter, for for bringing this. I have very high confidence that this is a a really significant issue for our community. I appreciate you highlighting it. My questions are a little bit more around sort of the procedural part of it and kind of what this, what the committee sort of or the work group would be. So as I'm reading it, it's, it would actually be a work group of disability rights commission or it would just be a work group made up of just disability rights commission members? Can you clarify, I guess, the intent of this or membership of the working group and and is it is it a working group of the disability rights commission or of the common council?
Working group of the, as far as I envision it right now, would be a working group of the disability rights commission. And I, when it goes to them, they can decide exactly how they want to deal with it. But I can see that if they would like additional people involved in this, they could. There are different, lots of people in the community who might be able to help work together with a couple commissioners in the disability rights commission to work on the the recommendation, their implementation. So that's how I see it right now. It would not necessarily be something that the city council does itself, but rather comes from the disability rights commission and maybe include other members of the community as well.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And then the, well, I guess maybe it's a question for Attorney Haas. So my, like, my understanding is right now, any any of our BCCs, so the disability rights commission can create their own subunit as if it's as long as only made up of members of that body, they can create their sub unit, doesn't have to be by resolution. And then they have sort of autonomy on on, obviously, they would have to vote to create the thing, but then it's sort of theirs and then they kind of control it. Is that is that right, I guess, as a first question? Well, it looks like you got muted.
Thanks. That's correct. It looks like this resolution would simply state that they are to vote on whether to form a working group. It does not require the disability rights commission to form a working group.
Okay. And then I guess going back to Alder Vetter, so I think you said it was on their a recent agenda that they discussed this. Was that they take any recommendation or vote there?
Yeah, it was on their last, their meeting in February and where I told you about the public people coming from the public and doing testimonies that were super strong and but unfortunately, at that point, once everybody had spoken, there's going to be discussion about it. And they just lost quorum immediately. Somebody had problems with their internet services and they didn't have the time, they lost quorum and couldn't work on it anymore. I know they're very, because they couldn't do any more official business at that point with the lack of quorum. But they are taking up at their next meeting, which will be on March 23rd. It's the first thing on their agenda. It's going to be discussed for at least the first 15 minutes of their agenda of hour and a half meeting. And we'll talk about it then, be able to see if we can form this working group at that point and talk about what work is involved in this. So that's what's happened, transpired so far. That'll be right two days after our city council meeting. But they told me that they want that first thing on their agenda so they can, so they can work on it right then and there.
Thank you. So then, I mean, Attorney Haas, if we didn't, if we didn't pass this resolution, they could still have on their agenda an item to consider forming a work group with these parameters, et cetera. And then they would be, if they voted yes, it would be created at that moment for them. And then they would also be in control of changing it at some point in the future or closing it out or anything like that, right?
Correct. I think the difference would be, you know, the, if this resolution was passed, it has, I think, a requirement for reports in six months, right?
Right. A report, yes.
And so.
Well, and then and and every three months thereafter, which was sort of another question I had, it seems like it's it's, I guess, my, my concern is that it's creating a new sort of what we would normally think of like an ad hoc committee, but it's sort of an infinite one. This, you know, it's kind of straight out of TFOG's recommendations to try and be careful about this. So I'm just trying to clarify that it at the sub, at the subunit level, if the disability rights commission thought this was a good topic for them to to work on and they're and it's going to be just members of that body, they could do that and sort of leave the council out of it. And if they have a report, they could send a report at any time as disability rights, they could just send us reports, right? I guess I'm just trying to get to, I I want to be careful to sort of create expectations and things that get sort of lodged at the council level if it's not, if it's not needed.
The commission could certainly create its own working group with its own timeline. And then if it had recommendations, it could seek an alder to sponsor any, you know, any action to implement their recommendations. That's true.
Okay. But and if, but if this were to pass as it is right now, we would, until it's basically changed by resolution sometime in the future, assumingly, this working group would exist and there would be an expectation to provide a report every three months directly to the common council, the way it's written right now.
Correct. I mean, they, you know, the commission could certainly ask the working group to report back to them first. But this does say there would be a report submitted to the council.
Okay. And then just one last, I guess, question on the, maybe for your attorney Haas on the first, that now therefore be it resolved. So it says that the Madison Common Council recognizes a need for a comprehensive response to the home healthcare crisis, supports establishment of a working group to study the issue, make recommendations, and following acceptance of the recommendations will work on their implementation. So that, I mean, one, just will work on their implementation, that's the work group or that's Madison Common Council. And I guess I'm just, you know, we clarified kind of recently the difference between recommendations and adopting new policy or any other sort of assumed actions. So I guess that is another thing that just sort of confused me a little bit and I want to be careful that we're not setting up some strange expectations.
Yeah, I mean, the the way I read the resolution and, you know, I didn't draft it, but it seems to say that the work group would do all of those things, study, make recommendations and work on implementation now. You know, implementation typically is done by agencies or the executive branch, but there could be a role for the work group and maybe publicizing what's been done or things like that. I'm not sure what was contemplated by the working group working on implementation.
Okay, I think that is my question. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Heck.
Thank you. I wanted to first seek a clarification from Alder Vetter. When you mentioned that the disability rights commission did spend time on this at their February meeting, the resolution itself hadn't been written yet. They were talking about the greater issue and what and getting public input and and try and just starting to get organized about what they might want to do. Isn't that correct?
Correct. But and, you know, it was being worked on at that time, but nothing had been finalized, but there was working going on, but
Okay.
They lost quorum, so they couldn't discuss it at all, which is unfortunate, but that's what happened.
Right, right. Well, it's in legisstar now, so that's great. And then a question for Attorney Haas. In in how this working group would differ from, let's say, a subcommittee, it's still a subunit. Would it still have all the requirements of public notice, minutes and et cetera, et cetera?
Correct. Whether it's called a working group or a subcommittee, since it is a body formed by another government, the body, it would be subject to all the open meetings, all requirements of open meetings, notice, public comment and all that.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Thank you, Alder Vetter, for this. I think it's, I'm a fan of us passing something and making it clear that that we want the work to take place. But I think one of the things that's really important with this, which you certainly have explained today, is that it's important for somebody to own it. And I think the fact that the disability rights commission wants to own this and, you know, can staff it and and do, you know, the all the hard work that's related to it is important. I've got some just procedural issues. I know Alder Foster pointed out some of some of my probably similar concerns with the resolution itself. I would say that I really like the recommendations that are being included in this ask. But I, but I've, I'm a little bit concerned that we're saying that that these have to be the solutions, which is kind of how it's written. I'm concerned that that it does say the work group will be formed by April 1st, but it's also asking DCR to vote whether or not they want to form it. And so if DCR decides ultimately that this is not something that they're going to, I'm sorry, the disability rights commission, DRC, decides this is not something they're going to form, well, this is saying be it resolved that the work group will form by April 1st. And so I think I find that a little bit conflicting and confusing on if they're, if they get to decide whether or not this forms, because we're not telling them that they have to do it. We're telling them that they should vote on it. That that to me is, I don't know how we, you know, how we do that. And then I'm a little bit concerned about the six months and three months thereafter. I mean, I think obviously, what that does is it points out how important it is and how this isn't something that we want to be a five to 10 year process that, you know, time is of the essence. This is a, this is a huge crisis. And I appreciate the efforts to get the city involved in this crisis as well. But I just, you know, kind of fixing this up, so it's a little bit, doesn't set a precedent of, you know, telling them this is exactly what you have to do, but making it clear. So I'm open for suggestions. I don't know if that's what Alter Foster might have. But I definitely think, you know, the intent of this is fantastic. It just, you know, before we approve it tonight, I'm hoping we can maybe tweak it and make it a little bit cleaner. Alder Foster?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, if I'd make a motion or if that's an order. So my motion would be that we would recommend to council referral to disability rights commission. And if I get a second, I can explain.
I'm sorry, there's a little noise here. I'll be taken care of in just one minute.
Alder Vetter, I'll go ahead and mute you and we'll unmute you if we have questions for you again. Some, somebody want a second Alder Heck's motion and, sorry, Alder Foster, I was looking at Alder Heck, hoping he would second. So we've got a second. Alder Foster, can you, you go ahead?
Yeah, so, yeah, I agree. I think everybody's feeling there's really good work that needs to happen here. It sounds like there's interest from disability rights commission, although unfortunately, they also lost quorum, et cetera. This is already, this is really just like asking them to vote on it. So I think I think sending it to them and getting a recommendation come back from them, possibly with some of the language, maybe, you know, tweaked a little bit and clarified would make sense. And I think maybe at the same time, could also just check in with attorney's office around some of these other alternatives around sort of, you know, creating it on their own as a subunit. So that's sort of my rationale to send it there. And I had also, Alder Vetter would be happy to kind of work with you and share some more thoughts on maybe there's maybe some other ways we could codify some of this stuff and then leave the the creation of the work group sort of to disability rights. So anyway, that's that's my recommendation is that we get a a recommendation, the council gets a recommendation from disability rights before we assign, pass this resolution.
I would, I would note that it's probably, so I, 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 I'm not voting today. But my my feedback would be, I think there's a strong desire by Alder Vetter that I've heard that we actually, and I'll let her speak for herself in a moment. But I think there's a desire that we actually vote on something before the end of the term. And so if that needs to be modified, but I think, you know, I think Alder Vetter feels and I, and I, I would like to as well vote on at least some sort of, you know, be a way of making it clear that this is something we're looking for. I'm going to let Alder Vetter speak. And then I'll call on you, Alder Foster. Alder Vetter, go ahead.
I know that something that was mentioned that can be tweaked a little bit, I think, is the the timeframe on this. And I think it having, having the work group formed by April 1st, I think is very doable because the disability rights commission's meeting is March 23rd. So April 1st is after that. But whereas the, I think it's very possible for them to, and this is if they agreed to do so, submit a report to the council six months. But the part about every three months thereafter, I think that can be a little bit more. It doesn't have to be exactly like three months. It's as they come up with new, new recommendations and new work on it, they can report that. But I know, I don't know if it necessarily has to be every three months is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I'm, again, I'm willing to to work outside the meeting on a substitute that could be, you know, passed at our next meeting that captures, you know, so the intent here. I don't think we have, I don't, to me, there's enough things that I would want to to have further discussion on and see cleaned up and updated before recommending it to the council as is. So my, so I still think the recommendation of CCC sort of makes sense to me. And I would be very supportive of helping working on a substitute and supporting, you know, potentially supporting a that at council instead of, instead of actually referring it out there. But I just, I really think, I think one way, a good way to do that is we could actually by resolution, just ask disability rights commission for a report on this topic in a for a report on this topic in a reasonable timeframe. And then let them do that via work group or as a, as a committee, you know, themselves, they could bring in, you know. I think there, I think there's a way to do that with all the guidance that you're providing here that might just be a lot cleaner and not run into the issues of creating a subunit for them via resolution, because I think, I think it's just not, I think it's going to cause issues down the road.
Alder, Vedder, go ahead.
Okay. I, I don't want us to have this seem so restrictive. I'd like it, definitely want it to go to DRC and, and have them tell us what they, they're, they support doing and, and all that. But it would be a type of working, working group. And, and, and together they can do it as a small working group together and, and get back to this Disability Rights Commission on their own as they work on this. And then when Disability Rights Commission has enough information that they want to send on to the council, they can do so at those times. Just as further clarification, if that helps at all.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to refer this to the disability, the next meeting of the Disability Rights Commission. I think, obviously, I can, as council president, get another, put something else on the consent agenda. If something gets worked out between Alder Foster, it would probably be my preference that CCEC not have a recommendation. And we can always make the motion on the floor to refer this if we can't figure out a substitute. But it does seem like Alder Foster is willing to put in some work to get something passed at our next meeting. And so it'd probably be my preference not to be passing a referral tonight. But I'm going to let Alder Conklin speak since she has her hand up.
Oh, I thank you, Chair. And I think Alder Vedder wanted to say something. I've seen her, if she wants to, I'm going to let her speak.
Yeah, just briefly, I definitely want to have this be addressed at the City Council meeting of the 21st, that's our next meeting, next week on Tuesday. I really want something to come back to the council to be able to, to support. If it needs to go through other configurations, iterations, you know, that can be done before that, if it's possible, and definitely afterwards. But I definitely want to have this be brought to the City Council meeting of the 23rd to have that adopted at that point. That's all I wanted to say. Go ahead, Alder Conklin.
Thank you, Alder Vedder. Let me just speak on this. You know, I am a part of the Disability Rights Commission. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there on last month in February. You all know that I had family stuff going on, so I actually wasn't able to be there. And quite frankly, I didn't understand, I guess I didn't realize or understand that this was going to be another official, you know, check in every, I didn't understand that and I didn't realize that. And I, I just, I already support getting rid of be, be some of the BCCs, so if that's what this is going to be, I don't really support that because there's already enough groups and subgroups and things like that. If this is something we want to work at through the Disability Rights Commission, cool, I'm happy with that. But I can't, and I don't think it's right that we assign another subgroup that we, that disability rights has to be a part of and make these, you know, check ins and stuff like that. I just, that's not right to force that onto somebody. And the disability rights, we're already trying to kind of combine them as well with other groups. And I think this would be a great project for us to take on if we combine some of these BCCs. So at this moment, I'm going to say I am not comfortable with passing this or forcing a subgroup onto the Disability Rights Commission, especially because they're not here. They, we might, you know, they might have heard it, but they haven't, they don't have a full understanding of what's going on anyways. So that's just what I want to say. After understanding that this is going to be another subgroup that we have to check in and record and notify and things like that, I just cannot support that. At this time, I want to see less of that. But if this is something that we're going to work on at DC or DCR and, you know, DRC, excuse me. And this is something that we can work on and that we can make some headway. I'm happy to be a part of that. But assigning another subgroup, I do not support. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion on the floor to refer. So do we wish to?
I think Alder Vedder is raising their hand.
Alder Vedder, go ahead.
And clear, I don't want it to be too onerous on anybody, but, but it is intended that it be a working group, not, not a big, not a big subcommittee or anything, but, but a working group that works on these issues. And I, because I don't want it to be too onerous for the commission as a whole, but just wanted to make that clear, so it's not interpreted differently. Just wanted to state that.
Thank you, Alder. Any other discussion, questions, comments on the motion that's in front of us? Alder Heck?
Thanks. I, I, I have faith that Alder Foster and Alder Vedder will work something out that will be both clear to, to DRC about what we're hoping for as well as to council. And it may just be that we're, you know, asking DRC to consider forming this subcommittee to address the issue. And then they will be the ones that, that take that action. And you know, you, you have so many great recommendations that you've thought long and hard on and in, in the resolution. And those are things that that subcommittee can, can consider. I, I feel like in its current form, the resolution is kind of saying, okay, these are 10 recommendations and you can make more if you want to. So, but I, I feel like that's, it really needs to be more passed to them as here are potential things you can look at and let them decide how they want to proceed that, that both DRC and the working group. So I, I do think that with Alder Foster's help, there's, there's generous help, I'll say. To, you'll be able to work something out to get something in front of council and DRC and, and begin the process.
Thank you, Alder. So we have a motion on our floor to refer this. Alder Vedder, go ahead.
No, I, I, I didn't have anything to say. I just, I just appreciate what Alder Heck had to say and I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that can be worked out as, as you're speaking about as well.
I know how much, I know how much Alder Heck appreciates appreciation, so I'm glad you were.
Alder, Alder Foster too, for being willing to work on this with me. Appreciate that as well.
Thank you. So the motion on our floor is to, to have referral of this item to DRC, their next meeting. Do, do we want a roll call or do we want to assume approval by unanimous consent? See, Alder Conklin, go ahead. Oops. You're muted, Alder Conklin.
I know, I know, I know. I'm trying to figure out raise hand, lower hand. I'm mute, mute. Anyways, no, I was just, I want to be clear. So our recommendations are going to be to refer the, the whole resolution, I guess.
That's correct. But, but, but it sounds like there, if, if that's what we pass, there's still going to be an alternate path going on for Alder Foster to come up with a substitute that we might, may be able to adopt on the 21st. So if we, if they can't, if they can't come up with an alternative path, the recommendation coming out of CCEC will be the motion in front of council. And on the council floor, we can decide not to do that. We could decide to, you know, figure something out on the floor, et cetera. But you know, this would be the default motion, you know, unless the council president decides that there's something else or, or any member of, of the council decides. But, you know, I will say, my goal hopefully is for there to be a substitute on the consent agenda that, you know, we can vote on, on the 21st.
I just want to make it clear, as far as recommending it to go, oh, that's already going to happen. Is it, it's already going to go to the disability rights? Is that?
They have an item on their agenda to talk about this, even if we don't refer it there. And so, you know, that will be a topic there, whether or not this legislative file gets referred as another story. I think we can, we can probably between now and the council meeting, use this legislative file as a, a strong suggestion opposed to a, you know, more prescribed path, which is what this is taking. This is taking kind of an odd path because it says that they can vote on and decide, but they need to do it with dates and there, there's some, there's some conflicts in, in this current resolution. And so I'm hopeful that that could be worked out behind the scenes and we can still have something that lets Alder Vedder and, and other Alders like, like myself that are leaving be able to pass something that sends very strong recommendations to the DRC and says, this is a crisis, here are some things to think about as part of the recommendations. And we really hope that you decide to do a work group and then leave it up to them to decide how they want to handle that. And as you talked about earlier, Alder Conklin, I mean, they may, they could decide to do that as part of their regular meetings and they could decide to do, you know, a work group because that, you know, might be too detailed for the regular meetings. But that would entirely be up to them. Does that help clarify?
It does. Understood. Thank you.
Yep. So if I don't see any objection, I'm going to assume approved by unanimous consent and move on to our next item. All right. Our next item on the agenda is legislative file 76649. I'm, I'm sorry. Our next item is 76660, which is amending our ordinances to allow additional reconsideration opportunities. It's the last item on our agenda today that requires a recommendation to the council. And then we have a few other discussion items, but it's getting late. So I promise you, we'll try to get through those stuff as efficiently as possible. I, I am introducing this change. I recognize that our reconsideration rules do not allow members who miss meetings to ask for reconsideration. It, it's very confusing how it was working. So I'll give you some examples where our reconsideration rule was broken. If you lose your Zoom connection during a vote, you cannot ask for reconsideration. If you happen to be at the bathroom, if you happen to be. So I guess it said, in order for a member who was due to an excused absence, not present at the time to move consideration. We may have arguments about what excused and unexcused is for Alders at meetings. And so this just really cleans it up and says that, that if a member did not vote and they wish to move consideration at the same meeting or at the following meeting, they can. And it's still allows for reconsideration if they were on the, if they were on the prevailing side. So that doesn't change. But this just really addresses the absences, which our ordinance, I think, just had a weird hole that we didn't realize. And I think as we use hybrid technology and, and as we realize, you know, that we don't normally fight over what excused and unexcused is, and we should never really go there. Let's have a little bit more flexibility. So, you know, if somebody comes late to a meeting or has to step out, lose a connection, et cetera. So pretty simple change that I think will just make this less confusing. So any questions, comments or concerns about this particular ordinance change? Can I get a motion?
Move a recommendation for approval.
Can I get a second? Second from Alder Heck, thank you. Unless I see, otherwise I'm going to see approval by unanimous consent and move on to the remaining items on our agenda. Thank you. Our next item, I do not have anything prepared for, to be honest. I wanted to use it as an opportunity to get some feedback. It's legislative file 76681. We are trying to, we, Keith is trying to provide guidance to the council office on finalizing the Alder Mentor Program. And I wanted to see if any members of CCEC have suggestions that they wanted to make for the Alder Mentoring Program, which we have not finalized yet, but will absolutely positively have an alter mentoring program. We have received feedback. I've, I've personally have had a desire, for example, to let Alders pick their mentors. I've been told by others that that's a bad idea, that we should just assign mentors. You know, I, I strongly believe that there should be some sort of structure to the mentor program. It shouldn't just be an introduction. You know, everything from, in the past I've talked about, just questions to ask your mentor, you know. You know, so here are things to think about, things mentors should point out. Obviously, we're going to have, you know, a very, very robust orientation process with a lot of education, but I still think there's a lot of value in having a mentor available. So I just wanted to have this topic on the agenda at our last CCEC meeting for people to get, give, give, give some feedback. So if anybody has any feedback, this isn't your only opportunity to give feedback, but I will say I'm hoping to finalize this in the next week or so. So, you know, Karen and, and the rest of the council staff can actually start putting that process in place. So Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think a mentor can be and should be an important and valuable thing. You know, my experience was I was part of a cohort where it was assigned. It was interesting to have lunch once or twice with my mentor, but didn't ultimately click, I guess, in a number of ways and don't feel like I really got anything out of it. Conversely, I made, you know, relationships with other Alders who I clicked with and, you know, basically had mentorship through other Alders, not as assigned. So I guess I'm a random, random selection. And you might get random results. And then I guess the second part is have, you know, that, that round, and I think the way we've done it most recently is always with other active Alder colleagues. Has there been any conversation around ex Alders serving in this role? I think there's a, you know, there's a number of experienced Alders in the community who might very well be, you know, up for making connections with a, a new Alder and helping out. And that might be as useful. Because I, I think most folks are going to make the connections they make on the, on the current council, one way or the other, with, with or without the program. So I guess that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, President Furman. Well, being in the cohort that did not get any mentors assigned to them, I think I see deeply the need for them, whether it's assigned or we pick them out, they pick us out, or we pick them out, however it goes. There needs to be some sort of open communication, like, hey, I'm here for you if you need me, like. And I think it's beneficial to kind of like keep, keep them like opposites attract almost, you know what I'm saying? Like two unlikely people that you might not click, like Alder Foster said, could potentially be people that click though. But no, I think you do got to kind of have somebody that you would align with and want to work with, obviously, to make it easier. But again, I think it's just having that leader, someone that you know is leading you or can help to lead you, or if you guys are both failing, then you can fail together. But I want to be a part of the program. I, I still, whether I'm a mentor or mentee, it could go either way. So sign me up, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Curry?
Thank you, President Furman. Alder Foster mentioned something that was key on my mind about former Alders, just looking forward and knowing next cohort. We already know that the council is going to significantly turn over and be new Alders and some of those who are existing is, are, will only be in our second term. I would like consideration to widening the pool of who could be considered as a mentor and most connections being made now, if possible, or at least even introductions. And then, what's the second part I was going to say? In terms of self-selecting or being chosen, I know that we discussed this already and it's being incorporated, but I think around those who are willing to be mentors, there being some criteria, standards, expectations. For instance, on what's a minimum amount of time to meet, sharing some other resources and gathering feedback from those who have been mentors. I say this personally as having been selected as someone's mentor for the current cohort and recognizing too out of capacity that they're reaching out more than I have. And so I think letting people know what they're lining up for when they do choose to be in the program.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Alder Foster?
Yeah, plus one on, on. Um, yeah, a plus one on, on what Alder Curry just said, or Vice President Curry, I was just going to say the same as I think getting some, um, I mean, just one, not assuming that anyone who is an Alder or has been an Alder is necessarily a good mentor. So just, you know, thinking about that, um, is it just whoever's available or is there any kind of, um, you know, selection process? And then, you know, what are the, what are the expectations both for the mentor and the, the, the mentee? So having some kind of, you know, it looks something like checking in X amount of time or et cetera. But I think some kind of framework, just so everybody has some kind of shared expectations would probably, um, help a lot.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Attorney Haas. You're muted.
I'll get this one of these years. Um, uh, you know, I, I certainly, uh, think mentors are incredibly valuable. I'm just curious about, um, you know, how this would be structured because there's obviously nothing stopping any new Alder from reaching out to a former Alder or a current Alder and asking questions and asking to be as informal or formal as of a mentor as they want to be. I mean, the council certainly can't require former Alders to be mentors. I don't even know if you can require current Alders to be mentors. So I'm assuming this would be kind of a, a voluntary thing and, um, so I, I'm just not, and I mean, there could be some value in making recommendations about this is the type of things that mentors can provide. But I, I'm, I guess I'm not clear on what, how formal of a program this could, this is meant to be and, and could be.
I appreciate that, Attorney Haas. I will say in the past, um, Alders have been asked whether or not they want, uh, that they want to be mentors. Um, and so, you know, I know council would assign people, um, to, um, Alders, um, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't take like an Alder that didn't want to be a mentor. Um, and then obviously Alders don't have to have a mentor if they don't want one. I mean, we've had, since, you know, we've had vacancies, I've had, um, at least one Alder tell me that they didn't want a mentor. Um, but, and then obviously nothing stops Alders from reaching out to other Alders, um, you know, and having those relationships. I think what we shouldn't do is assume that they're going to have those relationships. Um, you know, there, there are people, you know, I, you know, if, if, if I, uh, you know, beat an incumbent, um, that incumbent certainly is not going to want to be my mentor. Um, he may, he, he or she may, um, but you know, I, I shouldn't, we shouldn't always just assume that people know other mentors and, uh, or other former Alders in other districts. So I think really the goal there is to make this opt in, um, and give some sort of framework for the people that want frameworks. I mean, I, I didn't, I, when I, when I had a mentor, um, I, there was no framework in place for that, um, but we figured it out and, um, and now I am close personal friends with that person that was my mentor, um, and so appreciated that, but definitely went into it with, um, you know, uh, no, no, you know, other than, you know, this is a person that you could speak to. And I did find that helpful because I did not know former Alders. Um, and so, yeah, I mean, I think, um, you know, voluntary, but, you know, hopefully have some sort of expectation or framework, um, for, for people to work with. Um, is, would be my response to some of those questions and concerns. So, but thank you, Alder. Uh, Attorney Haas, Alder Heck.
Thanks. I, I, I don't really have an answer for what I'm, uh, the question I'm going to, to pose, but, uh, I, I feel like there needs to be, uh, uh, some sort of method for, uh, to handle new Alders, uh, picking a mentor. I feel like that has the potential to be problematic because a new Alder may not really know any of the other Alders or, and, and, or understand what they need out of an Alder. And, uh, or I mean, out of a mentor. And so I think it needs to be some kind of hybrid, uh, method of, of assigning and choosing, uh, I don't, I don't really know how to standardize that. It might just be, uh, intuitive. I don't know, uh, when, when the personalities are, are involved or, or known. I know I had a mentor who, uh, I spoke to in a, in that sort of relationship, maybe four or five minutes total. So it varied.
Thank you, Alder Heck, Alder Madison.
Yeah, um, I, I like the idea of mentors, but just knowing, uh, my own capacity and knowing other folks' capacity who I may say, hey, would you mentor me? I think about mentors and more so like a work group. So it would be really helpful if folks decide to take a, um, a mentor, not just to be get paired with two to three people who can sort of serve as their work group. Because I think, um, when you think about meeting with somebody, mentor has all these sort of, you know, you think you're going to get some of the, some sort of these like beautiful things out of this person. But if you know that you can sit down with someone, like I met with Alder Heck right away after getting appointed and understood the agenda. I met with former Alder Scott Resnick to run through the budget, for example. And I think Alder Foster and I met for some other reason, like, you know, walking the square and talking through processes. So I think being able to get introduced, uh, to two to three Alders and just say, hey, they'd be willing to sort of serve in your work group. Well, at least for me, that has more benefit than saying someone is going to be my Alder or be my mentor.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Foster.
Um, yeah, I guess one thing, well, and I think Alder Conklin, I can tell, just really wanted to know. So I had Alder Skidmore with my mentor. So I'll just put that out there. But so I think one idea was, you know, maybe this is sort of like a dating service or, you know, matchmaking where like, you know, maybe people don't care. Like, yeah, I'll take anybody. I just, I want somebody to talk to. I don't know what's going on and I want, I need some help. Assign me somebody. And maybe there's a mentor. It's like, I don't care who it is, you know, I'll help anybody. And just giving each other their contact information. I think there's a real, there's a lot of value in that. Um, cause you're, you're right, President Furman. I mean, if you come on here and don't know anybody, don't know formers, we shouldn't expect that you'll just kind of figure it out on your own. So I think that would be a good lift, but I do, I, I still think that people should kind of, if you're going to get anything out of it, there has to be some kind of desire, um, and, and connection. Otherwise, you know, it's going to be five minutes or it's going to be a funny lunch. And, you know, I, I don't think that's what everybody's trying to do with this program.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Uh, Alder Figaro Cole.
I mean, I think everybody, um, thank you. Everybody has their own, um, learning curves and, and later learning, um, processes. So I think, um, choices are important. So definitely I would personally would not like to be, to be offered a mentor and, you know, like without me knowing this person. Um, but, um, that may work for some people, but I will echo kind of, um, what Alder Madison just mentioned. I, I wouldn't call it like a group, but I would call it more like, um, what are have, having a, a access to some kind of document that that elevates the strengths of individuals within, within council. Because that to me is how I, how, I mean, when we first started here, we didn't have mentors, we didn't have resources. We were like thrown at the mercy of whatever. But, um, I was, I had a question about zoning. I was told go and talk to Patrick Heck, he can help you. So I, I mean, I talked to Patrick about many different things today, but he was the key for me to talk about, um, to talk about, um, zoning, talk about the budget, let's talk to Furman, talk about transportation, let's talk to Grant, and so on and so on. So I think, um, having elevating the people that, um, that have, that are strong on those skills and that seats on those committees. To me, it was an amazing, it would have been a very valuable resource instead of me asking 10 people to make it to all the way then to Patrick. Like, you know, like, uh, it would have been nice to have that in front of me from the gate goal.
Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. I mean, I think, yeah, I think, uh, understanding whether or not there's going to be three, four, uh, two, three Alders that have the capacity to help. Um, I think, you know, Alder Heck luckily has been, um, incredibly kind to a lot of Alders, uh, sharing his planning skills, but he has had the, obviously the time to do that. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not, it's not clear to me that, um, it's, cause he's got nothing going on. Um, uh, I, I think figuring out that structure and figuring out some recommendations there, um, I think that's, it's, it's all good feedback that we'll, we'll go into finalizing this. Uh, Alder Figaro Cole, again, go ahead.
Yeah. And again, I'm not saying like go and talk to Patrick. Patrick has all the right not to talk to me. That would be his loss. But, um, it would be like putting a document forward of people that are willing to mentor on those skills. So, um, again, it has to be that balance, not just throwing people under the bus and expect them to help us. Thank you.
Sure. I, I, and I, yeah, the only, the only other thing I, I just want to point out is everybody, everybody has their own, um, agenda and their own policy. And so like, you know, um, I think we need to be conscious of that. So I can tell everybody to go talk to Alder Heck for planning stuff, because I agree with Alder Heck on most planning things. Um, but I know other Alders on the council that I don't agree with on planning stuff, um, that, you know, if they were given an opportunity to sell their planning vision to people, I may not agree with. Um, and so, you know, I think there's a weird place there that we need to just be careful about. Um, you know, figuring out how, how we do that in kind of a, a helpful way opposed to letting Alders, um, just, you know, influence, um, other Alders, um, through, through recommendations. And, um, I, you know, that's something we're going to have to, you know, the future council will have to figure out. And I'll try as outgoing president to, you know, uh, take, take this stuff into consideration. But, you know, I think we need to recognize mentors do have, um, have, uh, political objectives. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, again, I guess that would be, I mean, a risk that we have to take it. Going back to the example of, of talking to Alder Heck about zoning. Um, I mean, I never, I, you know, of course everybody's different and we all, like you said, people have agendas, but I never felt, you know, we just talk about zoning, like what is zoning on the code? You know what I mean? Like how does zoning work? It wa- I, I never felt like there was a conversation about these are my views on zoning or whatever. Like that wasn't what the conversation was. And hopefully we have people with integrity that are willing to, to mentor and will follow that kind of lead that explain to me how the ordinance work and not how, you know, what your personal agenda is. Um, I, I really found it very valuable. I mean, I'm very fortunate to have had that, that experience, and I wish we can pass that experience to other, other Alders in the future. And Patrick already compromised. I know he's done, he's up. Now he's leaving council. We'll, we'll, we'll volunteer him for future councils to use that, to use him in this.
I think, I think we said his name enough. His hand had to go up. Um, thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Alder Heck, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment that Alder Figaro Cole didn't realize that my agenda was, uh, being served by every bit of information I gave you. I, it was just very subtle.
Any other, um, feedback, um, for the, the mentor program? I would, I would say to Alders that will continue to be on council that, um, you know, I, I will do my best, uh, working with staff to get this, um, to be good for the new term, but I can, you know, this, this should be a continually evolving process. Um, and I, you know, I think that based on the feedback, um, that I think there's some good suggestions here tonight, um, to hopefully come up with something for, for the new term. Um, but also, you know, it sounds like very strong encouraging of people to, um, you know, continue to think differently about this stuff and continue to, uh, you know, uh, network and, and, uh, take advantage of their, their current colleagues and former colleagues. So we'll figure something out and, um, I, I do appreciate all the feedback. Uh, the next, um, item on our agenda, um, is, uh, Alder onboarding and, uh, ongoing training. I put this here in case there are any updates. Um, I think the biggest update I could tell people is that the, um, uh, department videos and PowerPoints are, um, are start, are, are, are coming in. Um, I, I have access to them personally, but I'll be honest, I have not reviewed any of them. I'm not going to put Karen on the spot to see whether or not she's reviewed any of them, but I will say that we are, we are, you know, people are, are finishing up their, their first version tasks, um, and sharing. Um, and I'm, I'm really excited to, to get that stuff up and, and start sharing that with, um, the candidates. Um, uh, I, uh, had an opportunity with, um, Alder Paulson to do a tour of the Parks facility on Saturday. Um, we certainly didn't schedule it at a time to make it available to more people. And so I'm sorry, more people didn't show up. Um, but, but they will, they will offer that again in the new term. And I would say, uh, it was incredibly helpful. Um, and it was a great framework of things to think about. Um, that they'll certainly be talking to Karen about, um, for, to get a chance to talk to, you know, some of the people in parks and understand their work and understand their vision. Um, and so I think it's, it's a neat opportunity, um, that, that, um, future departments will do, and not everybody obviously is interested in, in parks, um, because it may not be the most important issue right now in your, your, um, your, uh, um, I'm losing my mind, district. Um, but, but, but I, but I do think it, you know, it was, it was a I, 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 a neat, a neat example of, uh, what I called the 201 course, our, um, orientations being kind of the 101 and 201 being the, you know, more of advanced level of, I'm going to go see the facility and better understand, um, you know, how they work. And, um, one of the cool things about the parks thing was, it very much was sharing of the vision of that, just very unique property. Um, and just a cool area, but, um, uh, you know, that, that's the only update I have on, onboarding and ongoing training. Um, I don't know if anybody had any questions or, or feedbacks or comments, but, um, you know, I wanted this to be on the agenda in case there were other updates also to give, but I just don't think there is any at this point. All right. Um, uh, moving along, the council update, uh, off, the council office update was, uh, sent out. Um, if anybody has any questions about that, certainly, um, speak now. Otherwise, um, hoping to get some additional, uh, brain power out of everybody tonight on some feedback for, um, some questions that Alder Madison, um, wanted to get some, uh, feedback on. So um, I don't see any questions on the council office update, which Karen distributed. So I'm going to move in, uh, right into discussion on future networking events, um, and give, uh, Alder Madison an opportunity, um, to uh, kind of frame the feedback that she's looking for. Um, so Alder Madison, it's all you. Go ahead.
Yeah. Is it possible to wrap both this one and the, is the youth one, the one I also brought up to you on the agenda, the last two?
Yep. So the next agenda item would be discussion on youth-focused, uh, council activities. So if you wanted to include them together, sure. Um, I don't think anybody would have an objection of that.
I just want to maximize the little bit of time left. Um, so in short, just to give a brief overview, um, I had a conversation with, uh, county supervisor April. And we talked a little bit about both of our experiences. We had some shared experiences, but also there were some things that we were like, wow, this would be great if we can do this. Um, and it would have helped us understand each other's bodies, I guess. So in short, um, her and I met for COF, we talked about ways we might want to work together. And two things came out of that discussion. So one, we were both wondering whether or not the common council and the Dane County supervisors ever had some sort of networking or meet and greet, or just something where both bodies would meet each other and sort of, uh, you know, away from chambers sort of conversation. Because there's some of our, our work that overlap and I don't know that huge body. And, um, I don't necessarily know who in that body works on certain things, you know, in advance that I might be that I want to prioritize. So we thought that might be a good opportunity for us to connect. The other thing we, uh, both were wondering were, were, did either body have some sort of like, um, structure to engage young people? So, you know, as the couple of months that I've been Alder, I've seen a couple of youth groups come, but I definitely see a lack of kids of color coming to common council. I would assume or I'm hoping that maybe earlier in the year, some of those kids came. And so we were just talking about how do we engage young people, especially young people of color, taking part in some of our processes? Uh, ooh, it looks like it's getting dark in my house. That way, uh, more kids see themselves as potentially serving in those seats, but at minimum feel a bit more engaged in their city. And so, um, two things we said we might be able to do, let's one go, or let's one have some sort of annual event potentially. Let's talk about if other folks are interested in that. And two, we thought about what if there were some sort of something that looks like Alder for a day or mayor for a day, or county executive for a day for young people. So we talked a little bit about that. Then we scheduled some time to meet with county executive Parisi and the mayor and just say, hey, what are your thoughts about this? Has there been anything? Would you support it if other folks between our two bodies also supported it? Because we would want the young people to be able to engage with them as well, not just us, but you know, the entirety of both bodies. And they seem very, very interested, uh, would want to take part. The mayor on our side mentioned that there was some talk about some youth programming or youth conference. And Karen, I figured you would be here. So I was like, I'll just chat with you here about that. Um, but really, we did, we have not planned anything. Our goal was to have a conversation with our individual bodies. So like, I'm coming here to talk to you all. She's also getting on the agenda to talk to, um, her group over there at the county. And then we will come back together after gathering feedback from everybody and figure out what might be best next step. So really just gathering feedback around engagement opportunity between the county supervisors and the common council, uh, Alders. And ideas around engaging young people throughout the year, especially kids of color. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder Madison. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, two cents on the, the first question. I mean, I would just say maybe connect with, um, Attorney Haas around sort of questions of open meetings, et cetera. I think that, you know, the first thing is like, is it a, in terms of networking, is it like sort of social based, which could be, I think, very interesting and make, you know, for good con- connections, but like explicitly not like business, you know, sort of things or versus the others. So just clarifying that, I think would be good on the, on the mixed meeting, but I, I like, I like looking for opportunities to make connections between the county supervisors and the, the common council. Um, and on the second one, um, I would just suggest maybe talking with Larissa in the council office, um, around this question of sort of youth engagement. around this question of sort of youth engagement, you know, at our meetings, et cetera. And I would, I think that might be a good place to get some, some strategy and some thinking around opportunities there. So thanks for bringing up both of the, both of them.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any other feedback or suggestions? I appreciate Alder Madison wanting to try to get some feedback on this. Obviously, it's gonna be in, coming on the alders in next term to follow through. But I think there's a lot of good combined knowledge here that hopefully can provide maybe some, 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 some suggestions. Vice President Curry.
This is definitely putting someone on the spot who's not in the meeting. But I wonder if Alder Madison, you've talked to Larissa at all regarding kind of the new position, community engagement strategist? Maybe some ideas that her position could help in terms of how to engage less traditional folks? Folks who are not, y'all know what I mean. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I got you. We had a conversation early on when she started and then I reached back out because those social media squares, she, I think she might have created them, but I think she, I'm not sure if she put them together, but they were useful. And I was like, oh, people, you know, I got some good feedback on Facebook, for example. But she was saying that they decided not to do those again until after April 18th. So I was just gonna wait until after to circle back to her just to not put any more work on her, I guess, plate before the 18th. Because I wasn't sure why they, why you all or not you all, but you know, why it was decided not to go forward and do those. But, so yeah, I haven't talked, but I got it now to go kind of circle back and talk to her about some strategies.
And then also, like, obviously, we have our aspire interns and we had interns in the common council office this summer. And I've seen like other groups visit maybe the fleet garage and learn about like different departments. I wonder if there are other city departments that kind of have revolving initiatives or are connected with some of those youth who can maybe provide that feedback on how to get young people interested, vested. Yeah, I can't think tonight.
Yeah, no, and I talked to East High School, they have a group, I forget the title of it too, but they have a group that that might be interested, like, you know, more so related to government and, you know. I forgot what even high schoolers call their government structure, but, you know.
Thank you both. Alder Figaro Cole.
So a couple of things, you know, Justice Castellania runs a program that is in collaboration with city staff or engineers and whatever. The kids get a, get a project and they kind of develop it as a group. And they come up with these proposals on how this park should look or how this, whatever. So during my term, yeah, I've been in two of those meetings because they do it every year. And everybody's invited to come to the, to the meeting, a lot of alders are there. But I think it will be, it will tie very nicely with this idea to bring the kids into the council chambers to do a quick presentation. Doesn't have to be all of the, you know, the two-hour presentation that they do in the meeting, but just like, like bring them in to have that, that connection is the reason that it'd be good. And then the other one is kind of like what Giles was just mentioning. And I don't have the full information in my head, but I was trying to figure out how to do a mock council meeting that I know that, that Furman is working on. But I wanted to, I was trying to think about how can we make the kids do it? And a couple, one of my neighbors that works for the city and works for MSS for, for the kids programming, he gave me two connections of groups that actually are, are involved in civic activities. So I can pass that information to you, but I don't have them up here. So I have to look through my email and I forward that to you. I, I think I love the idea. And again, with the thing with justice, it's like most of the kids there are, are the people that we're looking for to get engaged.
Gotcha. Thank you. This was really helpful.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other feedback for, on this topic? Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate everybody sharing some, some good, good, good stuff. And I really do look forward to the council continuing to discuss this. These are some very good ideas. All right, so our last agenda item, which I was required by ordinance to have on our agenda is future agenda items. I'm not sure I actually realized I was required to have that. But obviously, this is our last common council executive committee meeting. So we're not really gonna talk about future items. I will hijack the topic. I did not plan this, but I just, really just wanted to thank all the common council executive committee members. I wanted to thank Karen, Attorney Haas and staff for, for helping make these meetings happen. This is, this was a pretty intense CCEC term. We filled up vacancies and we talked about a lot of really in-depth stuff about the structure of the council. I'm really proud of the work that we did together and really, really appreciate all the time and energy people put into making these meetings incredibly useful and trying to continue to improve the council. So thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody. I really, really appreciate it. And look forward to seeing what people do, do next. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to say thanks to you also for keeping us organized and sharing meetings. There, as you said, there was a lot that we pushed through. I think it was, I think we did a really, really great job. It was a real service to the council and just really appreciate your work in keeping us organized and moving through it as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole.
Well, I raised my hand, so I'm just gonna stick on what Grant said. Thank you for, for the leadership and, and the collaboration with the, with the council, council staff. I really, really appreciate it. Learned a lot through all these meetings and the moving, like the TFOX teams, making that a priority and meeting here, that, that to me has, has been critical. I think we had, we have accomplished a lot and we had really cleaned up some of the ordinances. And for those that, well, I, I mean, I really like Patrick and Grant and Furman. Definitely, we'll get a chance to say more about you guys later, but I really appreciate all your combined expertise and mentoring through all these processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Curry.
Thank you. I just, I want to echo thanks as well for the structured organization, but mostly for figuring out how to get us together where we're not meeting and having 18-hour meetings on top of our council. So recognizing that we changed that structure and it was not easy, but you made it appear to be so. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. With that, if not seeing anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alder Conklin, second by Alder Figaro Cole. If I don't see any objection, good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Night.